And I think with Christian joining us, we're at a forum. Oh, and we have, yeah, I think that we're at, we're at a forum now. We've had a couple of board members join.
Wonderful. So good morning, everybody. The sun is out. It is kind of spring today. And it's nice to see all of you here for our April board meeting. We'll get the meeting started at 7:32. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on. Are there any public comments? Is there anybody from the public or staff that would like to make a comment during this time? Okay, hearing none. Making sure. We will move on to the consent agenda. Included in that is our meeting minutes from March 18th and the check register. And I will add that I had just emailed Clayton that the first section, the public comment section, has a weird little sentence fragment at the end. It probably just needs to be eliminated. But I wanted that changed. Anybody have any other edits or comments about those two items? Oh, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
A move where you accept the amendments as edited.
Thank you, Paul.
Or the minutes, not the amendments.
I'll second Amy.
Are we just voting on the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's accept the whole consent agenda with the minutes being amended.
Okay, thanks. Susan, is that okay with you?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? All right, moving on.
Maybe I don't want to interrupt our flow, but I wanted to point out, I think that we have a new board member with Bethany Clark with us.
Bethany, are you here? Let's see. There's so much moving around. Okay.
I haven't seen her camera turn on, so I don't know if she's able to fully participate, but I just wanted to give a shout out that we have a new alternate board member with Bethany.
Thank you. I see you, Bethany. So let me introduce you. Good morning. We've not met yet, but I'm Amy Brewer. Chair of the Board of Commissioners from Williston. Bethany is our alternate from Essex Junction. Thank you. Well, welcome. It was a little bumpy getting you here, and we still need to get you set up with an email, a GMT email, but welcome. And should we take one second? No, we're gonna pause. We have a really full agenda and I'm afraid to take some time. So if we can get through it, I'd like to do the introductions at the end. Forgive me, that's not generally how I like to roll.
Yep, that sounds fine.
Welcome. And thanks, Clayton, for letting me know that Bethany was here. Okay. So we are going to move on to the Montpelier service adjustments, and Monica and Chris are going to walk us through that proposal, which is also in our packet.
Right. Good morning, everybody. Recognizing this is a very full agenda, I will try, we will try to be crisp. The information in your packet is pages 10 to 61. So in summary, I think you might recall, a couple of months ago, we requested the board's permission to move forward with public comment for looking to adjust Montpelier and Berlin service. Given the conclusion of the My Ride microtransit pilot funding, VTrans requested that we reevaluate that particular service. And so we put out for public comment two scenarios. One would be the return of Montpelier Hospital Hill, which was in both of the scenarios that were put forth. The first scenario also included a potential return of the Montpelier Circulator route. And the second scenario brought, would have brought, or brought back a reduced My Ride zone. So those were the two scenarios that we put forth for public comment. We had two public comment sessions, official sessions, one in person at the CVRPC office in Montpelier, and one via Zoom. We also received a fairly significant amount of public comment by email to the planning department email. And generally, the overwhelming preference for the public feedback was for the return of Montpelier Hospital Hill. That was pretty much universally lauded, as well as the reduced My Ride zone that would serve as a feeder to, that would serve as a feeder to the other routes, so City Commuter, Montpelier Hospital Hill, et cetera. So eliminate some of the duplication that we had been seeing previously. So with with that recommendation, which was also universally supported by GMT staff, that is something that we would be looking for board approval this morning. Certainly, if there are any questions, we are available to answer them. Although, Chris, I may hand the baton to you to make sure that I am very under-caffeinated. I'm only like this much through my coffee, so I'm sure that I missed, sure that I missed something important. So, Chris, if you could fill in the blanks, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, so there are two other things I just wanted to highlight. One, and we put in the memo as well, that GMT did speak with TVT. So in the event that this service was transferred to Tri-Valley Transit, they also expressed their support for scenario two, which we're putting forth here today. And then the other is that we are recommending that this be implemented in August. I think at the last meeting, we said essentially either June or August. And in order to sort of work through some quality service related items, we wanted to sort of do some retraining and have an implementation date set for mid-August for this change.
Great. Oh, and another thing, seeing Christian reminds me, I wanted to make sure to ask whether Christian or, and I'm not sure if Ruben is here too, would like to share anything. They were very, and I'm very grateful for their involvement in the public input process. And so I just don't know if there's anything that you would like to add, Christian.
Yeah, I was just gonna add that I wanted to thank both you and Chris for your efforts and the outreach work you did. I think you managed to make sure everyone was heard, and I think your conclusions do accurately reflect what we heard in the meetings. Not everyone, it appears, will be up to maintain the services they depend on. So it's, I was also impressed by how you were working with individual riders to make sure and explain how the service would fit their needs.
Thank you.
That's great. That's great to hear, Christian. Thanks for being a part of that public feedback alongside staff. Any, any questions or comments? Catherine, are you kind of raising your hand? Okay, go for it.
I noticed in some of the written comments in the packet that there were a lot of concerns about shrinking the My Ride zone. And so I'm just wondering how the recommended proposal addresses and takes care of those, or is that just the thing we just need to accept because we're adjusting service based on our current realities?
That's a great question. Thank you, Catherine. I think a lot of the comments that came in pertaining to concern with the reduction were subsequently, we're able to follow up with additional information that, oh, well, the new Montpelier Hospital Hill will be able to get you from point A to point B, or that sort of thing. And similarly, some of the comments that we heard about My Ride service quality were either from very early on in the pilot where there were a lot of, a lot of bumps in that particular road, or will be resolved by the reduction of the zone. So for example, right now, if somebody were to book a ride out by CCV on Route 12 from there up to the Berlin Mall, that's kind of end to end, and it takes quite a, quite a long time for, you know, comparatively speaking, in that zone. And, and then if they cancel or no-show, that has rippling effects on everybody kind of subsequently, and, and people not being able to get rides because of that particular no-show for that really long amount of time. But with a smaller service zone, those sorts of issues that arise when there are cancellations or no-shows will, will be addressed. So, but Chris, or maybe Will, who responded to some of the input, do you want to kind of flesh that out a bit further?
No, I think, I think that, that covers, that covers it.
Hi, Christian. It's Chris. Catherine, does that, does that work for you? Okay, go ahead, Christian.
And this is somewhat in response to Catherine's point. One thing that really, I think, assuaged a lot of fears about that reduced My Ride service was the deviation capacity along the Hospital Hill. So some of those folks who were mobility reduced, who had locations that they wouldn't be able to walk to through deviations were going to get that same door-to-door accessibility.
Thank you. That's a great point, Christian.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, we are looking for an action for this. We do need to approve as a board service adjustments?
And so there is a possible motion that is in the read ahead that I had sent.
Yeah, I'd be willing to move that Green Mountain Transit Board of Commissioners approve the implementation of the Montpelier Hospital Hill and reduce, sorry, reduce geographic zone in My Ride by GMT service in the Washington County service area.
Thank you, Christian. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Oh, thanks, Tasha. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Or abstentions? Great, thank you. And thanks for doing all the public comment and outreach to individuals, and that really helps. I'm moving along to the state grant application. We knew this was coming. It always comes up kind of quick. We haven't gotten a chance to talk about it as much as we had always hoped. We understand. Tim, you're up.
Okay, I want to share my screen. Okay, did it come up?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Tim Bradshaw. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the Director of Grants. Formerly, I worked with VTrans. I was actually a public transit program coordinator for V, for VTrans for seven and a half years, and I, and I reviewed the grants on that, on that side of the fence. I will say that it's a very competitive grant application process, but we've worked closely with VTrans over the years. There'll be some additional negotiating after we submit our formal first round grant application, which is, which is actually due Friday of this week. I worked with staff within GMT to gather all the necessary documentation that we need, and we're just, you know, buttoning up the final funding, funding request, which we're going to talk about today.
Hey, Tim, I'm just gonna interrupt. Your screen is actually the preview screen. If you want to change the settings, then we're just seeing one, one slide at a time.
Oh, we're just seeing one?
We're seeing current slide and next slide.
Yeah, we're seeing the notes for like the presenter.
We're seeing the notes.
Yeah. Because I'm sure that you have nasty notes in there about Amy and Austin.
Um, let me see here. Not quite sure how I do that, but.
I think it's a swap presenter.
You might have to.
Did that change it?
Perfect.
Okay. All right. So we're gonna go to the next slide here. Just an overview of the grant application. You know, we've been working with VTrans. In fact, we had a meeting with them last week, and the RPC was involved in that meeting. They've asked us to, in our submittal, to have an additional reduction of $289,000 for our rural funding request. There's going to be some additional reductions that Chris is going to talk about today related to the urban, urban division. I believe those, those are going to be implemented in August, but we'll talk about that later. The urban and rural funding requests attempt to lower projected deficits. We look closely at what, you know, what our budget is, and try to, you know, mirror that as best we can, taking into consideration some of the requests from VTrans for, for our application. The capital request includes numerous projects that are impacted by status of the 5339 competitive grant opportunity. Every year, the FTA releases a notice of funding opportunity to apply for bus and bus facility grant applications. That has not been released yet, so there's still some unknowns that we're, that we're aware of. Next slide. Rural funding request. For the 289,000 reduction in the rural funding request, GMT has identified 140,000 in CMAC funding no longer needed in FY26. This is in part related to what was just discussed, the proposed reduction in the My Ride service and reinstating the Montpelier Hospital Hill route. Nick and I also closely reviewed how we're trending with our grants this fiscal year, and we realized that, you know, we would be underspending our grants. We, we identified some additional savings there. We, we have also identified additional 149,000 in potential cost savings, which may result in service changes to the seasonal routes in FY26. VTrans has informed GMT that the Valley Floor seasonal route in the Madder River Valley is underperforming and has not met the ridership benchmarks for the past five years. And it's, you know, it's, it could, the service could be cut. But VTrans, who we spoke with last week, has indicated that if we could come up with a plan on what those service changes would be, then, you know, they, they would consider it. GMT will be meeting with staff from both Sugar Bush and Vale to identify potential cost savings, including service reductions and/or increased local contributions. The idea of reinstating passenger fares is also something that we were discussing yesterday internally at GMT. In FY26, GMT budgeted 135,000 or available rural funding balance to support the rural operations. This could result in additional service reductions over and above the 289,000 requested by VTrans. So I wanted to talk a little bit about capital, and Matt, thank you for putting this together late last night. Changes from the approved FY26 capital budget for the rural. Line AB changes from 132-foot cutaway to 135-foot heavy-duty diesel bus. 375,000 increase in funding request. Staff intent to request capital contributions from ski resorts equal to local share of vehicle. Line AC changes from ADA conversion minivan to non-ADA minivan presider. That's a decrease of 43,500. Line A, capital line AE increases by 75,000 to cover additional facility needs. Primarily driveway and parking lot repaving. Inclusion of FY25 carryover projects. So this is something that, you know, when I worked at VTrans, we, we asked the providers to minimize these carryovers, but now we still have, you know, several projects that are underway, and VTrans will consider, consider those on a case-by-case basis with the applications. Was there any questions at all to this point? Okay, moving on. Urban funding request. GMT is requesting 2 million 200,000 state operating assistance funds in FY26. This is a reduction from FY25 in the amount of 430,000. The 630,000 award from the legislature in FY25 is no longer available. You know, VTrans has indicated 2 million would be probably where we're, where we're gonna land, but, you know, we, we need, we could use a little bit more. And that, obviously, that'll be part of the negotiation process with VTrans when we get to that point. We're discussing with VTrans if the 700,000 they have available in carbon reduction funds can be awarded to other Vermont Transit providers, and instead award GMT 5311 to 5307 flex transfer funds. Those flex transfer funds just have more eligibility for us in our 5307 grant application specifically for operating administrative expenses that are not tied to CMAC funding services or routes. Urban FY26 capital. I won't speak to this in detail, but you can see from the slide that it's a lot larger capital request, requests than it usually is on our, on our urban side. Local match below. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, if you wanted to kick this one over to me, I'm happy to walk through it. There's a lot more going on in the urban capital.
Yeah, well, that would be great, Matt, if you could go over this one.
Yeah, no problem. So you'll see in yellow are items that are changing from the board-approved capital budget back in November. And then I'll also know, over on the right, you'll see federal funds awarded by FTA, and I have several line items here that are highlighted in orange. So those are federal funds that we are targeting the upcoming, the next 5339 grant opportunity. So that's, that's really the crux of that capital bullet point that Tim shared earlier, that we have some, we have quite a few projects here that are that are really reliant on that grant opportunity to, to move forward on. And I'll also note, and, and line B, we have a 35-foot diesel bus, 335-foot diesel buses. I did not indicate that as being part of the 5339 grant opportunity, but that is definitely something we will discuss with VTrans on available vehicle funding and how we, we target funding opportunities there.
Do you want me to go to the next slide, Matt?
Yeah, why don't you go to the next slide?
Okay.
Yeah. So, like I said, the changes from the approved capital budget includes a bit over a million dollars in federal funding for facility improvement projects. And I, I will note that is a estimated figure as we have not completed the project cost estimating as part of our grant application preparation efforts with our A and E team. So we, we've not completed that part. So this is a lot of back-of-the-napkin math on Connor and my part here. So that is something that could potentially change, but obviously, with the grant application due this, this Friday, and this likely being a discussion item with GMT and VTrans at this time without the no-fo released. We wanted to put something in there to, to move forward. There were adjustments made to the electric bus line items, the, the actual bus purchase and the infrastructure line items. Those were adjusted to match the PO amounts from, from New Flyer, the pending PO amounts, as we have not issued those purchase orders yet. We also are programming the projected balance of the livability grant. That's VT040019. It's one of our oldest grants that we have in our existing transparent bank. So we are project, we are programming those funds to cover numerous ITS improvement projects. Automated passenger counters for a certain number of buses, overhauling the entire fleet with automated voice enunciators to better comply with ADA requirements. As well as some improvements, ITS improvements at the downtown transit center, which would namely be a platform announcement system similar to what we would have on the buses that would announce next stop arrivals and essentially just help us with, with better ADA compliance at the transit center. As well as potentially replacing the overhead signage out on the platform to get something that's gonna actually populate route information for, for our passengers. And then finally, this, this line item has also been covering a lot of our general passenger amenity projects over the past few years. So we have a carve-out there for that as well. We have two carryforward projects in that adjustment related to Lono fire system, fire suppression system upgrade. I, I put in 75,000. We're not sure if there's gonna be any carryforward from the sprinkler system upgrade. That project is likely on target to complete before June 30th, but there is a secondary project for building maintenance, building management system that will accomplish the ventilation tie-in that the fire marshal is requiring here. Timeline for that may push into the next fiscal year. And then we also, with the new planning contracts underway, new planning consulting contracts underway, will be restarting master plan study for 31 Queen City Park Road facility, and that will likely bleed into the upcoming year. So as a final note, the overall budget decreases by 1.6 million. That's largely attributed to the changes in the Lono, in the Lono line items. And the, and the capital match coming from FY26 decreases by 4,791. Those Lono projects being largely covered by state and federal dollars is why there's such a massive difference between those two numbers.
Was there any questions at all? Okay. So at this point, the action recommended, staff is requesting approval from the GMT Board of Commissioners, submit the state fiscal year 26 grant application to the Mont Agency of Transportation.
Thank you. My mouse was disagreeing with me, so I was having trouble unmuting. Unless anybody needs to see anything specific from the slides, I'll ask you to stop sharing so that we can see faces and hands. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Tim, can you stop sharing?
Yeah.
Okay. If there are no comments or questions, then I am looking to entertain a motion to approve. Or authorize, I should say. Oh, Michael is first.
Go ahead.
Oh, no. Tasha. Tasha, is that a question, by the way? Or are you ready to?
Yeah, thank you. I, I just had a question about this issue of the seasonal routes. Just what is the timeline for discerning, but how those cuts will be allocated? Thank you.
Don't really have a timeline. I mean, at this point, it's all just in the discussion phase. And certainly, we'll keep the board updated as this develops. No, it's, it's definitely specifically related to that, you know, that additional 140,000 dollars that we're gonna have to come up with some, some savings. But we had, we haven't made any final decision. As I mentioned in the PowerPoint, we're going to meet with Sugar Bush and Vale, and I think we've already had some preliminary meetings with Sugar Bush related to this, to this, to this matter.
And so we, the seasonal service has just concluded in the previous weeks, and we have a end-of-season wrap-up meeting that has not been scheduled yet. And so I suspect that within the next month, there will be a meeting where we sit down with all of the the partners that are involved with the Stow service and sort of lay out to them where we are and what some of the options are that we have.
Okay, and thank you. And just to follow, and how much, you mentioned that there was just a difference in the performance of the routes. How will that play in to the discussions?
So when we look at the route performance report, it does show that for the three Sugar Bush routes, that there are various levels of economic efficiency. And so I think that for Sugar Bush, that service that will, you know, play into how we approach reductions likely, especially with the Valley Floor identified by VTrans. With Stow having just the single route, it's, you know, the, the options are gonna be less there as far as, you know, what we treat with brands.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Susan, go ahead.
Yeah, so, sorry, this is, it's so complex. But last month, we had talked, I thought. Yeah, so sorry, this is uh it's so complex. Um but last month, we had talked, I thought, about shifting Lono to Diesel. Is that um still in play and um? You know, incorporated into the application?
And so uh um one of the things that you're gonna hear a little later is that um we've had a one hundred and eighty degree uh positive turn when it comes to our electric battery buses. And so um uh we have been informed that we are uh free to proceed. Uh with the uh previous load of grants. Um and so that's, like I said, that's the sort of the totally opposite of what we were. Expecting last month, and so that's uh great news and appreciate. Uh V Trans and FTA um Region One, you know, working on uh that for us. Um and uh with that said, uh we are, we are waiting for some final obligations before we put in our next bus order. Um but hopefully uh those conditions weren't uh won't change uh before we do that. So um so this means that. Uh we're planning on, I can't remember if it's six or seven buses that would be in our next order um that we, you know, plan on making in the in the coming months.
Okay, thanks.
That was a good question. Okay. Others.
There are no other questions, then I will introduce a motion to authorize the staff to submit the GMT's FY twenty six state grant application for both. Our rural and urban services to include required supporting documents.
Thank you for that.
I'll second.
Ooh, Susan was faster. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion passes. Thank you for the presentation and all the behind the scenes works uh work and all the good questions. We will keep moving on. Hmm uh we are looking um ooh back to Tim to uh approve amendments to our DBE program. And as you're presenting this, it'd be really great if you could just. Remind everybody what DBE is.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. It's in the, it's in the document, but I just thought it'd be great just to.
So um. I don't think I'm gonna share this the screen. Um you should have received in your packet. Um both the revised um disadvantaged business enterprises. Um you should have received the program plan for it as well as some work that Steve Falbel did for us to um. Get us in compliance with the fact that we are now considered a tier one instead of a tier two sub recipient. Um disadvantaged business enterprises allows opportunities for uh minorities, um um women businesses. Um to participate in RFPs and um contracts um with with GMT. We look closely at the DBE registry. Um that's on the V Trans website to make sure that we're actively involving um DBEs in our in our in our outreach and our RFPs. In our purchases. Um. Now, Steve Falbel recently also updated our DB goals. Uh we have, um I will, just in the interest of transparency. We did have to submit this plan already in trams in order to meet that compliance deadline. Um but the final step is to get board approval. Um we wanted to make sure that we are on top of everything right now, coming into this triangle. Not that we don't do that all the time, but. Uh we are moving into a triennial phase next month. Um and we're in pretty good shape. You are also, I don't wanna sidetrack too much, but we've also been providing follow up requests from the FTA reviewers in relation to our um trying to try and review. So if there's any questions related to this, it's it's an action on the floor to to improve our, to approve our revised um DBE program plan.
Questions?
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, sorry, Susan, did you have a question? Um, yeah, I had a couple of questions here. Um. So I guess first, just a general question. Um when we get changes to policies. Um like in this version, it was hard to see what the changes were to be like. I don't think they were made clear what the actual changes were to the old policy. Is that how, is that typical of how we do? Our work? Like it would have been easier for me to review this if I could have seen what the. Changes were to the previous policy. So that's kind of just a general question.
Yeah, I apologize for that, and I can share. Um we do, we do have it in track change format so that you can see what was. Um the prior version of it as well as this version. I'm happy to send that around um to the board. Um part of the reason I included that extra bullet points from Steve Falbel that he put together for us so that you could see what. You know, what those impacts were to our uh DB program, which he's, which he spelled out.
Yeah, I I appreciated that, but um I also find it useful to see.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that, Susan. I can send that around, around to the board um in track change format. So you can see that precisely what the changes in language were. Um some of it was also up updating me as the DB, the DB officer.
And so what are our DBE goals?
So, you know, we have um put together our DB goals. And, you know, that's a certain percentage of expectation of the DB participation. Um we, we, in the last three fiscal years, which is the triangle review period. Uh I think there was two years that we didn't quite meet. Need to meet our DB goal percentages. Um and when that happens, we have to, we have to explain that to the FTA and come up with a plan. Um going forward. But I, you know, I'm happy to share those percentages with you. I don't have them like in front, in front of me, but I'm happy to share those what what's in our goal.
Yeah, I would appreciate seeing that.
Yep.
Tim, I just pulled it up. I can uh, I can speak to that. So uh our. Annual goal, DB goal between federal fiscal fiscal year twenty four and twenty six is zero point two two percent of our. Um all of our federal dollars that we spend uh in a given year.
And that's determined by formula?
That is, so that's a calculation that Steve Falbel has helped us with. It it analyzes our spending by uh. Nakes code, and I don't have the acronym spelled out in front of me, but it's essentially different uh industry um uh. Different industry codes. And so we look at how our spending based on. Different where it touches different in industries and then uh looks at the Vermont DDE directory and looks at available DVDs in those different areas of spending. So uh we have such a low goal because the majority of our spending is in areas where there are no available DVDs.
Okay, yeah, that's the that is much lower than I thought it would be. Um and so do you know V Trans is gonna continue to run a DB, DBE program?
Uh they are required to unless there are changes at the federal level. Uh I haven't heard anything about changes happening to the DBE program.
And and what about their business development program?
Uh that is a great question. I.
Matt, I just saw Ross pop on. Um do do we wanna see if Ross has an answer? Yeah, he looks like he does.
Sure. Well, thank you, Amy, and hello, everyone. Um yes, we continue with our DB program. It's a one point four seven percent right now. And there's no plans. We work at our civil rights office. Um who uh manage the DB program and get people on the registry and the like. So no changes uh to this longstanding program. And uh we were well over that with a recent award to our paratransit and scheduling software. And now like GMT, we're just trying to hit those uh surprisingly low numbers, and that's where we are as an agency.
Okay, um great. And uh I just have a couple, two more questions. Um. So I'm just curious about, there was quite a bit in there about oversight of DBE work? And is that new or is that? Um unchanged, do you know?
So some of it's new under these new guidelines as a tier one. Um you know, based on what Steve Falbel is saying that, you know, the it 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 was mostly. Um more affects the tier ones more than the tier twos affect more than it did the tier, the tier ones. So I think the most of the impact is on. Is on the um the tier twos, not the tier ones, but there will be some uh additional reporting mechanisms that will be required to do. Um we're already doing a lot of it now. Um it's just gonna have to be a little bit more um frequent frequent as far as our reporting requirements.
And did we get moved from tier two to tier one?
We did. Because the reason we got moved um is because we exceed six hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year.
Okay.
In contract. So that when we were, when we became aware of it, we we immediately, you know. Got our plan updated and submitted to be with, to be in compliance with the FTA. But yes, because we have annually, we have more than six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, Susan, then we we are now classified as a tier one.
Okay. And then my last question is, I I was just trying to understand this uh race neutral versus race um. Forget the other term, but how do you use like race neutral uh means to facilitate DBE participation?
Want me to break this, Tim?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, it's a very, it there, the terms are very confusing. So it's race neutral and race conscious. And essentially what they boil down to is. Race conscious is when you utilize um larger construction projects and assign a DB goal to those contracts. To uh help reach your overall goal. Uh race neutral is just when you. Try and utilize DB vendors as best as possible through your normal everyday spending. So I I don't understand why those are, that's the name of those two terms. It doesn't make any. Logical sense to me, but that's, that's really what it boils down to is race neutral is just. So in our instance, we have a zero point two two percent race neutral goal and no race conscious goal. So through our normal everyday spending, we will try to utilize DB vendors as best as possible to reach that zero point two two, two, two percent goal. If we had a race conscious goal of, say, one percent, then I, construction projects that have subcontracting opportunities would have a DB goal. A DB project goal of one percent assigned to try and reach that, to try and meet that DB uh percentage threshold.
So are we required to have goals for one? Um or the other or both? What is our requirement for goal setting?
So I I don't, I don't, I couldn't tell you exactly what the require. What I do know is that if you, if you fail to meet your DB goal, your DB race neutral goal in three consecutive years. You have to come up with a DB race conscious goal to try and meet your, to try and meet your DB thresholds in in upcoming years. Um I think if, if we were in a larger area with more frequent construction projects that were in the. Tens and hundreds of millions with lots of subcontractors, I think we would have as a normal business uh practice, a deep uh race conscious goal as part of that. Um that's more for, you know, New York City, New Jersey, those areas. Um. But being a smaller entity and the fact that we did meet our goal in one of the previous three fiscal years, we're likely to continue with a race neutral goal. Right? Just having a racing, race neutral DB goals in our plan.
Okay, thank you very much for answering these questions. I appreciate the time.
I, I appreciate, Susan, that you asked those questions. They were, it was really helpful. Anybody else? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion to adopt GMT's new DBE policy that meets the tier one federal requirements for tier one recipients.
Thanks, Catherine.
Good.
Ooh, Chapin coming in with the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Or abstentions? All right, friends, we are moving right along. There was a lot to approve and action items on this agenda, but they are um moving right along. Um. Uh the drug and alcohol policy, um we revise this time to time when we are changing personnel or doing those kinds of things. So Stephanie, I'll toss that over to you to kind of introduce.
Great. Thank you so much and good morning, everyone. So while we did uh revise our drug and alcohol policy probably about a year ago, I believe it was in March. Uh we had an FTA audit on the drug and alcohol program this past summer. And one of the findings was that our drug and alcohol policy was out of date. However, the FTA didn't uh tell us exactly why it was out of date, but they strongly suggested that we use their model. To create or revise our drug and alcohol program policy. And so that's what we've done. So we've. Taken the information that was in our policy and changed the formatting to fit what they wanted. And so um with that. And because it is a board, uh we need board approval through the FTA. That's why you have it today. It can be found on pages eighty to eighty eight in your. Board packet. Um it's a bit cleaner and uh much shorter than it was before, so it does become a little bit more employee friendly to read through. So that is on the positive side of the policy. Happy to take any questions?
Well, I'm gonna ask Susan's previous questions. Um what are the the highlighted changes? Besides format?
There really aren't any highlighted changes. Um it is the same information. It's less information, like it's less. Definitions um and specific of that nature. Uh I'll take that feedback for the next time for when there is a revised policy to highlight what those changes are. But again, the FTA did not point out what the deficiencies were in the policy. They just suggested we use their policy builder to change our policy. And it, it's just a shorter, cleaner version of our previous policy.
Okay. I I do have one question. We we continue to name people in the policy um instead of positions, and I wonder whether um. Because every time we have a change in personnel, um we have to come back and change this policy. Do we wanna just name positions? Um or are we required to name names?
Um in the FTA policy builder, it was suggested that names are used. So uh I did not deviate from their policy builder. So I would suggest we continue to use names. It is helpful for the employees to know. Who these people are. I mean, we do have over two hundred employees at Fremont Transit, and they may not know HR. Or the DAPM or the Drug and Alcohol Program Manager, but they know me and they certainly would know John Moore as the backup to the program.
Okay.
Amy, one of the things that we had hoped to do um to clear the board's um agenda a little bit was that when we did our rule on governance. Um we gave me the authority to sign these policies. Uh but when we're doing our terminal, so I have already signed a an updated policy. Um but we have to demonstrate to the triennial um folks that the board. Uh supports this policy, you know, and hence why uh uh we have to bring it back to here. And so. Uh sorry for that sort of awkwardness.
I love awkwardness.
Me, we've used the term triennial a couple of times this meeting, and I'm not sure our new board members may know what the triennial, triennial is.
Or the uh, I'm not of the GM remarks, I'm gonna be talking about the triennial review call.
Any other questions? All right, another action item. So if somebody wants to um accept this. Or move to approve it.
I'll make a motion um affirming the drug and alcohol policy issued by the general manager.
A second.
Thanks, Susan and Andrea. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Any abstentions? We are good to go. And I gotta remember to keep waiting for Tasha's eye, cuz I know. We are good to go, and I gotta remember to keep waiting for Tasha's aye, because it always comes in after everyone else's. All right, moving, no, it's fine. It just entertains my little brain. Um, we are going to next talk about uh the uh potential transfer of our MCI buses. Clayton, is that you? No, it's John. It's like one of everybody gets to to take this stage today.
Yeah, good morning, everybody. Um, so on page eighty-nine of the packet, there is a uh resolution uh asking for the board to authorize a transfer of our seven uh MCI coach buses. Um, these are buses that we no longer operate and haven't operated for the last three to four years, depending on the individual bus. Um, due to really ridership impacts on our uh link runs uh due to the pandemic and just um, you know, a ridership shift from um working from home. Uh, we've also uh in that time period transferred our Middlebury link to our friends down south at Tri Valley Transit. So we're not operating uh as many routes, and we've also, as you know, reduced the number of trips uh on our Montpelier link recently. Um, so these uh seven buses um have not been used or needed by GMT. Uh, we are paying uh roughly ten thousand a year in storage costs because we don't have the space on site to uh park those. Um, so recently, we uh advertised uh in some industry publications, uh basically a free transfer uh to another FTA recipient, which is allowed uh under regulation. Um, and that has created a decent amount of interest. Um, and one of those agencies uh is Valley Metro from uh South Texas. Um, they are interested in taking all seven buses for their existing commuter service and also some uh planned uh commuter expansion in their service area. Um, as well as uh there's a new uh uh NCAA college football team uh in their service area who built a brand new uh twenty-five thousand seat stadium without any uh onsite parking. Um, so they're working with the university on uh some shuttle service, and they could use these coaches on the weekends for that and then utilize them, you know, during the week for the commuter service. So um, they are very excited for them. Um, and uh we don't have a need for them, so we're trying to find a good home uh also while trying to save those uh storage costs. Um, these are the same buses that you may remember about a year ago, um, New York City Transit uh came on site and inspected them. Uh, they were interested in taking them. Uh, they ultimately decided not to. Um, but this is the same process uh we went through with the board uh then, which is essentially um, you know, would be the board uh approving this resolution for a transfer. Uh, Valley Metro has done the same, uh their board has approved the transfer. Uh, we would then work with Vtrans um on, you know, approval, uh which they were supportive of for the New York City transfer. And then ultimately with uh FTA to get their final approval. Uh, but both our FTA region and the region covering Texas are both aware of the uh the planned uh transfer and are both uh supportive of it, so we don't expect any uh challenges there. Um, the key takeaway right now is because um these buses were parked for the last three to four years, uh it paused their useful life. Um, so these buses are required to operate for twelve years before we can dispose of them. Um, these buses are all over twelve years old, but because they've been um sitting for the last three or four years, it extends that useful life by that same amount. So if we were to dispose of these buses and not transfer them to another FTA recipient, uh, we'd be on the hook of the uh remaining federal share, which is about eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's really uh our main motivation, uh in addition to finding a good home for these and, you know, getting them back on the road uh to get that eight hundred thousand dollar, you know, liability um off of our bucks. Um, Valley Metro is aware of the extended useful life requirements, and they would assume uh, you know, that federal share. Um, and their plans would be to run them for the next three to four years and then figure out what they want to do with them. Uh, environmentally, obviously, you know, South Texas is a very different climate. Um, you know, the the two gentlemen that came up to look at them had never been this far north and, you know, have never dealt with road salt. So um, you know, everything uh was expected except, you know, the underside of the buses. They just, you know, were shocked to see what, you know, road salt does to vehicles, but um not to the point where um it scared them off. So they, you know, do have a calculation of what uh used uh MCI would cost on the private market versus what these would cost for mostly transportation rebranding and potentially repowering. Uh, they still feel comfortable they can get a better deal, um, you know, with the with a free transfer essentially. Um, so really, uh today, we're uh asking for approval of the resolution. There is a proposed motion in Clayton's read ahead. Uh, next steps would be again to coordinate with Vtrans and ultimately the FTA. Um, we are um prepared to give a a small transport offset uh to Valley Metro uh of up to ten thousand dollars, which essentially would save us the storage costs for next year. Um, you know, it's probably gonna be ten to fifteen thousand dollars per bus just to get them down to South Texas. Um, so that, you know, we have uh tentatively agreed to that. Um, but the ongoing operating budget, you know, will save, you know, roughly ten thousand a year, which will be very helpful uh on the urban side. Um, so with that, happy to uh answer any questions um and would uh respectfully request the board to approve the uh the authorization.
It's so rare that we get a win-win, so I'm kind of excited about this. Um, does anybody have any questions?
I'm ready to move. That's friendly.
All right, go for it, Chapin.
I move that uh we authorize the transfer of seven uh twenty-two thousand thirteen MCI D four hundred forty-five hundred coach buses to the lower Rio Grande Valley Trans uh Development Council, operating transit service at Valley Metro. Furthermore, if the transfer to Valley Metro fails to happen, we authorize the transfer of these vehicles to another FTA funded transit agent.
So you're second?
Yep.
Thank you, Tasha. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Thank you for continuing to look for someone to house and utilize these buses. It's kind of nice um to see things. It's nice to have a win-win, so thanks for all of that work.
Thank you.
Um, all right, we are moving right along. Um, we are gonna talk about a line of credit. Um, Nick, that's you.
Yeah, so um if you look on page ninety, I believe, through one oh seven in your board packet, you'll see a memo from me, uh the term sheet from M and T, as well as some draft bond council documents. Um, I'm joined today by Michael Kegler, who is um our banker uh with M and T. Um, Ed Adrian should be joining shortly. I think he said he could come in around eight thirty. Uh, we're not looking for anything more than just approval today for Clayton to sign the term sheet with M and T. Um, we will be bringing back uh next month uh finalized uh documents from council um for the board to formally approve the line of credit. Um, I just want to point out that signing the term sheet does not obligate GMT to anything at this moment. It's just uh essentially the acceptance of terms um from M and T um for the line. Um, and I'm I'm happy to answer any questions. I I think the real summary is, is, you know, this is a non-revolving line of credit um for a max amount of two point seven million, which is roughly ninety percent of, you know, our average assessments over the last couple of years. Um, and really, the point of doing this is just to to strengthen our capital structure. Um, and uh with the coming possibility of the rural system going away, I'm sure many of you have heard me talk about how that could change our our um our working capital uh structure. So uh this is really just um, you know, uh something that we're doing to prepare for that, that possibility. And, you know, wanna be ahead of that um before, if it were to come uh any sooner than expected. But um, like I said, happy to answer any questions, and obviously, Michael can can uh answer questions on the banking side. And and like I said, Ed, hopefully will um be joining us shortly.
I'm here, Nick.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Like the shirt.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tasha, and then Catherine.
Thanks so much. Just a quick question. What uh what are our federal rules around paying interest?
We're allowed to pay interest, but not with federal money, essentially is the rules. And this is a tax exempt uh line of credit as well, which is um why we got such a a good interest rate. Um, it is variable, so it's based off of SOFR, which is the replacement for LIBOR. Um, and uh has a a spread of about a hundred and forty-five ba- or of a hundred and forty-five basis points with a um a floor of three percent. So, you know, if SOFR went to zero percent, you know, we would still pay a minimum of three percent.
Thank you. Go ahead, Catherine.
I realize this is a first step for the board, so I'm just curious that at some point, will we get uh a general estimate of what we might anticipate borrowing costs to be if we utilizing this line of credit um as part of any rural transfer or even as just part of normal operations if the rural transfer doesn't happen?
Sure, so Catherine, yes, that is something I can definitely provide. The problem with providing it right now is I'd have to make some really strong assumptions about what the separation would look like in terms of our balance sheet. You know, does does all the fund balance go? Does some of it stay? Um, obviously, that's gonna change our spending, um, you know, with the rural side going away. So I'd have to do a little bit of work on estimating how our cost structures uh would change. And then also, the other big variable piece of that is the federal government. Uh, because a lot of the reason for this line of credit, even if the rural system stays, is that sometimes um the FTA doesn't turn around our grants uh very quickly. And so we're accruing expenses for many, many months while we wait for for some of our larger grants. And that can be, sometimes it doesn't happen at all, sometimes it happens a lot, so it's hard to tell.
Thanks, I know it's a hard question to answer.
Yeah, thanks.
Anybody else? Any questions for Michael or Ed while they're here?
One last thing I'll point out is this was presented to the finance committee, um, and they did uh recommend uh recommend approval, giving Clayton the authority to sign the term sheet.
Okay.
As I just commented, the finance committee did review this. Uh, they felt it's a uh an important uh thing to have in our pocket going forward. The rural transfer may be the trigger that that uh we have to use this, but it's also possible we may have to use it even if we keep the rural. So it's a good thing to have.
Thanks, Paul. For comments or questions? All right, we do have an action item for this one as well.
I will introduce a motion authorizing the general manager to sign a line of credit term sheet with M and T Bank.
Thanks, Andrea. Who's gonna be the second? Oh, Mike, thank you. Any further conversation? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Or abstentions? Wonderful, so we have the uh approval to move forward um with that, and so I appreciate all of that. I also want to say I really appreciate not only Ed's shirt, but his mug, um, which is just a little dose of sunshine today. So, thank you.
Sunshine. Thank you. Have a good one.
Thanks, thanks, Michael and Ed for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, surprisingly, that was all the action items that I think we had on the agenda, um, which happened faster than I had imagined. So we're gonna move forward um with the discussion of the urban service adjustments preview. Um, and I'll pass that over to Chris.
Excellent, thank you, everyone. Um, so I'm gonna share my screen. Um, I was just reflecting as I was listening to the other, the rest of the packet, that I think it was around this time last year that we started the process for sort of the the August uh waterfall list uh last year. And sort of, we're here again with with additional uh stuff to talk about in terms of um service reductions. If this works. Does everyone see the PowerPoint? Excellent, awesome. So I first just wanted to give, uh, you know, today, we're we're only talking about uh the number one uh Wilson and the number eleven airport route uh as it relates to changes that could potentially go into effect in August. Um, you know, these are, this is sort of the the preview ahead of sort of a larger list as um we look to try and fill the FY twenty-seven uh budget gap. And so I first just want to give an overview of sort of what the current Wilson and airport routes provide in terms of service. One quick ridership update on the number one uh Wilson route from July of uh twenty twenty-four to January twenty twenty-five. We're actually at eighteen percent above uh ridership levels from uh the same period in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Um, and on the eleven, we are down seven percent over the same uh time period. Um, I also just wanted to highlight that on this particular route profile that I put here, um, it does note that uh it is reflective of the service change that the board approved um to eliminate the number eleven on on Sundays. Um, so back in January at the board retreat, we provided our sort of first stab at trying to reimagine what our service could look like to meet the growing needs uh of South Burlington City Center, as well as uh the the budget gaps. Um, in that version, the number one Wilson um was still gonna be relatively unchanged from a routing perspective, um except for a potential service to uh the airport. Uh, in the version uh for the number eleven route, um, this involved uh adjusting the routing to go from uh College Street to Main Street and essentially following the routing of the number one um up into South Burlington. And then with a counterclockwise uh travel uh down Dorset, Kennedy, Heinsberg, uh Market Street, and then back into downtown Burlington. And so for that first version, um, you know, the the changes to the Wilson and the airport routes, uh uh the span of service was going to stay the same uh for the Wilson route. Uh, the only difference was that the frequency um was gonna be set to every thirty minutes from every twenty minutes um across the day, across weekdays. Um, and then for the eleven, um, which has, will have the same rerouting in this version one and then a a another version that I'm gonna show in a in a few slides. Um, you know, there'd still be no service on Sundays uh for the the board action from months ago. Um, and there would be a shorter span of service on uh Saturdays and weekdays. And so uh we're looking at uh shifting the span to be from five forty-five AM to six fifteen PM. Um, uh, but the route will go from every forty-five minutes uh to every thirty minutes. Um, one thing to note, the current number eleven does start at six, and one of the reasons we're looking to shift this to uh five forty-five AM is in in our conversations with the Chitting Clinic um on San Remo Drive, which provides, uh, it's a methadone clinic. Um, they open at six o'clock, and one of the things we heard was um the challenge of folks trying to get there um on our current service. So this uh will provide a better connection for that. Susan, do you have a question on this particular slide?
Yeah, again, I just want to reiterate like how challenging it is. You know, we we meet monthly and it's, it would just be really helpful to see the actual changes. I mean, you're talking about them, but it'd be nice if we could actually see them in print. Um, uh, you know, uh, between what is currently happening and then what's what's being proposed. So I just wanted to highlight that, again, it's just, it's it's a little bit more challenging to have it presented to us in this way. Thanks.
So we can uh send the slideshow out um after uh the meeting. Uh, one of the things to keep in mind is that there's no decision on this um for this um month. It's just um basically providing you all an opportunity to see uh what we're, the direction that we are moving in and to ask us to bring items forward for the next meeting um to make sure that you have the information necessary to make a decision.
Um, so moving forward, so after the the January board retreat where we sort of had that initial look uh at the routing, um, we have since then had a couple of meetings with South Burlington and UVM about the original proposed routing. Uh, UVM did express that they had some initial concerns that the first version um could potentially lead to to some overcrowding or drop passengers at at peak times. Um, and so GMT staff worked with UVM to look at uh the data that they had uh for their shuttle ridership uh during the busy times of the day. Uh, and, you know, that was based off of their the ridership on the shuttle and sort of where their on-campus housing is and and sort of the the usage profiles uh that they imagine would probably be very similar to folks using um our service to go from Market Street uh to campus or downtown. Um, from there, staff also looked at our stock level data, which is something we have looked at uh for all the other service changes uh we've talked about to date. Um, and we've come up with this uh version two uh for the Wilson routing, which would provide bidirectional routing um on Market Street. Um, routing it on Market Street and um, you know, this this would essentially shift service uh Uh, routing it on Market Street and um, you know, this, this would essentially shift service uh to Market Street uh between Dorset Street and Heinzburg Road instead of uh where the current service goes uh on Wilson Road. Um, and like I said, the the stock level data, you know, showed that there was minimal activity, both boardings and a lightings on the the portion of Wilson Road that we're proposing um to shift the routing to. Uh, our, the planning and operations department did go out and and look at this particular routing and it did uh work operationally for them. I do also just want to note that this map does not have uh the spur to the airport that we showed in the first version. Um, we are still trying to uh get information from the airport um to sort of look at more closely, sort of what the trade-offs are and um when and where folks are coming from uh to get to the airport. So zooming in a a little bit closer on the particular section where this has changed from the last time uh the board saw this proposal. So just to sort of follow the routing on on the outbound for the Wilson bus, uh, the bus will go turn into the U Mall as it currently does. Uh, loop back onto Dorset Street and then uh make a right-hand turn onto Market Street and serve Market Street with approximately three stops there, continue to Heinzburg Road and continue on to Wilson uh via Wilson Road. On the inbound, uh, the number one uh would go in reverse, uh, again, down Market Street uh on at three stops along that corridor. Um, and then it would go straight across into the U Mall, uh, into the U Mall parking lot, serve the the three stops that are in there and then head back into downtown Burlington, um, as it currently does, um, up Dorset Street onto Main Street. Um, so outside of, you know, recognizing that that there would no longer be service on Wilson Road, uh, we did also want to look at sort of what the pedestrian connections are between Market Street and Wilson Road. Um, so in speaking with South Burlington, um, uh in September of this year, uh Mary Street right here uh will be connected via sidewalk that is already built uh from this portion of of Market Street uh to Mary Street. And then in the fall of twenty twenty six uh Garden Street over here, where you can sort of see some of the the building footprints, uh will be connected with Midas Drive, uh where Al's and Price Stopper is uh down there. So that'll provide another walking connection um for folks that need to access uh places on Wilson Road. And so, you know, one of the other things, uh, given that the the primary passenger load on the Route One um is between downtown Burlington, UVM, uh and sort of this upper Dorset Street corridor. Um, with with this particular change, this will uh pretty much guarantee fifteen-minute uh service intervals heading between Burlington Campus uh and sort of this portion uh of South Burlington. Um, one other uh positive byproduct of this particular uh bidirectional routing is um, there's a longstanding issue of folks who are uh waiting uh in this area with the current uh routing of the number one that um sometimes passengers get confused and whether the bus is heading to Wilson or uh heading into Burlington. Uh, with this change, that issue will still exist for uh because we're sort of double backing into U Mall, but for the two stops that are becoming the most sort of popular stops along Dorset Street, uh, which is right here over by the MT Bank, which folks primarily use to get to Target. Uh, and then for folks heading back at Barnes and Noble, uh, these two stops will now just only be serving one direction of travel. Um, so it'll be clear for for passengers um in that respect. So when I was working on the presentation, you know, I figured folks have probably gone down Dorset Street to a lot of the stores down there, but uh maybe haven't walked, actually walked down City Center to see sort of what is happening there and sort of why we're, we're talking about this. Um, so yesterday with the really nice weather, I I took a walk uh to City Center and took my dog and took a couple of pictures. So I just wanted to share. This is uh what it looks like. This is the sort of transit-oriented development that that South Burlington um is working on. This is looking west uh towards Dorset Street. Um, so as you can see, it's, it's a lot of housing, um, with a lot of commercial space sort of planned for this first floor um along this corridor. And you know, as, as the, as I mentioned earlier, with the budget realities of twenty six and twenty seven are certainly top of mind for all of you. Um, we're also trying to make sure that as we adjust the service that um we're adjusting in ways that we can hopefully um increase ridership. Um, so I, you know, I just wanted to, you know, there's a lot of other stuff that I'm gonna talk about, but this is just showing all of the uh at least housing development that's going on. Um, so you can see here uh right for the upcoming academic year, UVM anticipates there being about five hundred residents with uh sort of full uh full buildout at approximately seven hundred and fifty residents. These are primarily undergrads, juniors and seniors. Um, you know, this is especially with the, you know, I think uh as UVM plans on their development out here and the aging housing stock in Burlington, folks are uh excited to, you know, pay probably the same amount for rent, but get a a nicer quality housing stock compared to sort of the older homes in Burlington. Um, some of the development that's also happening in South Burlington uh is being done by UVM MC. And so you can see here, there'll be about two hundred and twenty units uh uh by late two thousand twenty six, the the first hundred eighty already built with this other forty six coming on later. Uh, these other two developments uh through nonprofit uh housing developments are already in place. Um, so the picture on the left is Howard Square. Uh, senior housing, uh, that's done through Cathedral Square. Um, and then sort of off, often the distance is uh Dover Place, which um is being managed by Champlain Housing Trust. So another, you know, almost eighty units uh of housing, with there are some of them being two, three, four-bedroom units. Oh, sorry Raj, I didn't see your hand over there.
No, it's fine. I just raised it. You're great. This is great. Um, I just, just a small detail question. Do you know in your conversations with UVM if they're planning on running shuttles now between? I can say that as a Essex rider, I'm out at the front of the hospital a lot in the afternoon and there's a couple of times in the afternoon, those buses over there are just packed with students going.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, and I was gonna, I was gonna get to this later. This is, you know, in our conversations with South Burlington. Um, one of the things they've made pretty clear is they want one transit provider to to provide service to City Center and, you know, they want it to be GMT. Um, recognizing that both UVM and um the Med Center both have their own forms of transportation. Um, but you know, given the, especially the the short distance, um, and sort of the housing that's already online. Um, we're sort of trying to make sure that the service is starting when it's needed and so that uh, they don't feel the need to provide their own private uh transportation.
That's great. No, I get it. I just was curious if they were cool.
Yep. Um, so you know, I know it's it's kind of a little bit amorphous of thinking about, there's this increase in population in City Center. There's uh a reduction in sort of total hours of service that we're providing across these two routes. And so um, one way to look at it, um, that I think I've, I've, I've used this, this data point in the past is this concept of people trips. So, you know, this is, this is essentially measuring the number of people that live within a quarter mile of a route times the number of trips that you're offering with that uh service. And so, um, if you're looking at sort of what is currently there uh with twenty twenty census numbers, uh, there's about ninety-one million people trips. And so, you know, as you're making service changes, you're hoping that um if if the goal is to sort of increase ridership, you're hoping that that number increases. And so we plugged in a lot of the the data that you saw on the previous screen. And and sort of ran the same scenario. And um, as you can see, uh, the number of people trips increases to a hundred and and ten uh million. So, you know, we're, we're making some, some uh geographic constraints shrinkage to the route, uh, some shrinkage to the span of service, but with the increased development, we're, we're making sure that that service is targeted to where um where folks are and where they're going. Um, so I just wanted to provide a uh a sort of quick, sort of like human-centered, what what is our riders gonna experience who are living there and what does that trip look like for them? Um, I don't really use ChatGPT, but I, I typed into ChatGPT to produce this image just to sort of get all of it. So it was kind of a a fun little uh trial. But in this particular um example, uh for a UVM student, this is um, you know, this is an upperclassman who's living in City Center and uh pursuing education in the STEM field. Um, this, this total trip of sort of that I I put out here, um, this is gonna take at max thirty minutes. It probably will take less because uh the bus stops are gonna be really close to where uh where they're living. Um, but at max, we anticipate about a thirty-minute uh trip. And so I did the same thing for a UVM MC uh employee. Um, and this is again, you know, we're asking folks to to, you know, the the routing is going between City Center and and Dorset Street, both to the the UVM stop on Main Street. So we're asking folks to uh maybe not, they don't need to walk as much on the first portion of the trip, but asking them to walk about ten minutes to go from the UVM stop to uh the Med Center. So this trip uh is also in total about uh thirty minutes max. Again, probably would be less uh during most of the day. Um, and to sort of put into comparison, at least for a UVM MC, their employees um are required to, unless there's certain caveats, are required to go to an off-site uh parking lot. And so um, I also wanted to put together sort of the time of how long it would take if the same City Center employee or excuse me, City Center resident who's a UVM MC employee decided they didn't want to take the bus and they wanted to drive. And how long would that take? Um, if you add up all sort of the travel time for them to drive from City Center to one of the remote parking lots to then take a UVM MC shuttle uh to the hospital, that actually would end up, this is one of the sort of few cases where that actually ends up being longer uh than what it would take to take uh this proposed routing for uh the GMT routing. So I I'm excited that this is providing a competitive option for folks to um to to get to the hospital from City Center. Yes, Raj?
Yeah, sorry. Real quick question, and I don't want to get into it now. So this is gonna be framed as, who can I check in with later to learn? I am curious, long-term, and again, background-wise, how you know, UVM and UVM MC, for instance, you know, pays into the system uh in comparison to like municipalities. So if there's someone I can, not today, if there's someone I can check in with later to get some more education on that, um, that would be great.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm happy to connect with you on that and and get the information. Um, and and that I should tie into um the next slide. So this was, this was a graphic that I I think I shared back at the January board retreat of sort of all the different uh uh current uh the the fair breakdowns among all of our sort of different programs that we have. Um, as you can see back, back in that data, which was for the first six or seven months of fair collection, UVM did represent twenty-five percent of that ridership. Um, and the UVM MC folks are um a smaller sliver of this sort of purple uh part of the pie that that I called out. Um, and you know, from that, from the board meeting back in January, one of the things that I I think was asked of the board was around um, you know, working with the Med Center to sort of better understand where folks live, um, when their shifts are uh and sort of, you know, what, what uh portion or what area of UVM MC are they working on. So this is just a quick snapshot of some of the work that we are looking at. We did get some data from the Med Center so that we can uh sort of uh look at it more closely of sort of where folks are, where their shifts are. And um as we continue to look at service adjustments, um, try and be cognizant of that as best as possible um within the constraints um that we're in. So that's just the preview that we can certainly talk about in future months. Um, you know, this is all just sort of highlighting what we've already covered. Why now? Um, as I mentioned, most of that development is already online. Um, there is, you know, when I was walking, there is already one restaurant already in business and two other uh commercial businesses already in there or planning to be there that I saw they had some uh stuff on the windows and probably more in the other commercial space. Um, the, the, the key one really is the timing. You know, I I think uh the city of South Burlington doesn't want to see multiple transit providers and and this really, this fall seems to be sort of the the pivot point of when that needs to happen. Um, and again, you know, this is really an opportunity for us to, to um better match our service to where uh folks are living. Um, and then in terms of timeline, um, you know, right now in April, we're, we're here talking about this. Um, over the next month, uh, we'll be doing some outreach with riders along these affected corridors. Um, if there's any particular committees uh in your local communities, if if your community is affected by this route or your community is just interested, I'm happy to um, you know, feel free to reach out to me and I'm happy to to walk through this with with um your local committee. Um, and then we're looking for a board decision on this uh in May with an implementation in August. Chicken.
Excellent. Thanks, Chris. Um, Juan, kudos for fully uh kind of working with South Burlington and thanks to South Burlington for looking at a united uh transit uh system and not having a bunch of private shuttles uh to the extent possible running around our region. So that's great. Uh, as we didn't talk much about the western end uh changes and some of those are significant, at least in uh in the Queen City. So we'll definitely want to follow up about how to engage uh various committees of of the city. So we have a relatively tight timeline if we want to come back for action in mid-May. So let's follow up on that quickly.
Yeah, a- and and that makes sense, Jacob. I think, you know, a lot, as we go through all these service reductions, not ju- not just this particular, and we certainly are asking folks to um, you know, walk a little bit further to to get to the bus and um totally understand, you know, the challenge for some folks, but that's, that's sort of the need that we're at.
Yeah, one, just one question, uh, and then we can deal with the rest offline, uh, is where UVM MC is on this, given that uh we'd be taking one route that comes straight to their door and the eleven and then putting it you know, uh, quarter mile away. Uh, what's their thought on that as they uh ponder uh in an unlimited access participation with us?
Yeah, that that's gonna be discussion over, you know, that that's something we'll bring for the next board meeting, sort of their perspective on, on this particular piece.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just weigh in on that particular piece that I I do want to continue to push that? Uh, for many, walking is certainly an important part of our health. Um, and door-to-door isn't always better for most people's health, right? So just continue to talk about healthcare costs and chronic disease um as part of these conversations. I think they're important as well. And that's not for everybody. Not everybody is able to, but for many it is. So, sorry, soapboxing it. Um, Andrea.
Thanks. Yeah, um, I guess first off, I I want to say it's like really exciting to see um an actual, we have a lot of sort of hypothetical and far-future conversations about transit-oriented development, and it's really exciting to see it happening and to see us adjusting the bus routes to cover that. Um, and uh, you know, also really exciting to see us thinking about um provide, like coordinating bus routes to provide more frequent headways in really kind of well-traffic corridors. I think like when you're at the downtown transit center and and like the nine and the two depart at the same time, it can be really frustrating when they're kind of like, you might be going to the, a place where you can take both of those. So um, yeah, so I want to say this is really exciting. Um, I know we covered outreach to affected, to folks who will be losing transit. Um, I would also love to hear a little bit about outreach to folks who will be gaining transit and particularly folks um who will be living in those like private or nonprofit-developed um residences versus the institutional residences, which, you know, I I know that we already have sort of existing partnerships with those institutions. But like for folks who will be living in those private developed communities, what will those developers be doing to kind of tell people about bus service and what will we be doing to tell people about bus service?
No, that that's great. And I think, you know, at least for the other ones, the the nonprofit developers, we have existing relationships with with both Cathedral Square and um Champlain Housing Trust. So that, you know, that certainly would be covered uh in that piece. And one thing I just wanted to share a small little anecdote, the um, as we were sort of having these conversations, um, it was fun to see uh emails from city staff in South Burlington that was sort of ten, twelve years ago talking about this. And um, it's nice to sort of, you know, it's nice to see that sort of come to to fruition ten, twelve years later, even if it took that long.
But are we gonna just to kind of continue uh to reach out to those, those private uh developers to make sure that we're promoting uh transit? Yes?
Yes, I'll, I'll be working with Jamie's team on that.
Yes. Yay. I I think it's exciting too. Um, Catherine, and then I think Susan, and then Paul.
Thanks very much. I I appreciated the presentation about the future pedestrian connections that will be happening from Market Street to Williston Road to help make that connection where there's now a gap in transit. What concerns me is that Williston Road crossing is completely unfriendly to pedestrians. And so those connections will get you to the to the Alice French Frye side of Williston Road, but then there's no way to really safely and effectively cross to the other side of Williston Road. So I'm wondering if there were any conversations with South Burlington about potential improvements in key areas to actually make that uh accessible to transit on both sides of the road.
I I I forgot to mention that, you know, we we sort of went in our conversation with them, we asked for sort of the timeline of all that. And um in two thousand twenty seven is when I think uh Wilson Road is getting resurfaced. And I can't remember exactly what uh pedestrian connections are happening, but I know that was something that uh they certainly advocated for, irregardless of sort of all this happening, just for the points that you mentioned that, you know, Wilson Road.
Since I'm on the city council's
Since I'm on the city council's side, also been attending these meetings that we, quarterly meetings we have with GMT. And we've been very grateful for GMT's working so hand in glove with us. On Williston, to your, your point, Catherine, very much the goal and as part of our TIF development is to basically make it much more pedestrian, bike friendly and crossings. Actually, across Al, that street will be realigned, so the crosswalk will become, the intersection will become an actual intersection. And we'll have no lights, there's going to be expansion of the sidewalk, expansion of a multi-use. So to your issue is, the goal is to make Williston a much more user friendly for pedestrians, bikes and public transit, and be able to not be such a, be honest, car dominated corridor. And that should all play out by the end of 27.
Thank you.
And just to add on to that, Catherine, this is a topic that's on the agenda of the South Burlington Bike and Ped Committee. And they'll actually be talking about it in their May meeting, really taking a close look at the opportunities for that repaving project that's coming up. And so I'll make sure that I bring up the, the issues that you raised.
I'll just note that it's really cool to ask that question and to have real answers. Like, yay.
I was just nerding out over the same feeling, how many people at this table have so many multiple hats that make this a really complete picture? It's really cool. Susan, was that your question or do you have another question?
No, basically, I just wanted to also express my appreciation to the work that both Chris and Mike Scanlon have been doing on the number 11. All of those, just, just really appreciate this really visible example of what good transit can look like. And I really also especially appreciated Chris's efforts to kind of contextualize the impact by looking at census data and the lived experience of folks living in that area. So just thank you.
Paul.
Yeah, this is a great and exciting work. And thanks to Chris and staff for pulling this forward. It appears as though in the future, this may increase our ridership along those routes, which is, is great news. Is there some cost savings in the, in the process as well, Chris?
Yeah, so, you know, part of this, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I think it's, this in total would save about 5,000 driver hours, which is about three quarters of the cuts that the board approved at the last board meeting for the June related cuts. So I, I know that doesn't maybe help in terms of scale, but that's, that's sort of the, the size of this.
Thanks. We have a couple of people popping off. I just want to say that I hope, you know, I, I do appreciate all of South Burlington's planning and how comprehensive they've been, as well as coordinated with GMT and the medical center and UVM. And I do, I'm sitting, you know, a mile away from great development in Williston, and I do hope that we can, other communities can be as coordinated and as intentional with what they're doing and hopefully gain more access to transit. So, you know, I kind of dream of the, the development that's happening in Williston is kind of taking advantage of this too. And I know that we don't yet, but I do hope to. So, again, my two cents. Any other questions or comments for Chris? Okay. Thank you so much. More to come. All right, Clayton, you're up for the general manager update.
Great. And so I want to thank the board for getting through all of the action items today. And, and happy that our schedule still allows for an update. And sorry that many of the previous meetings have been so jam packed. I want to start off by talking about a couple of significant departures. And first off, I think that the, the board may have seen a message at the end of the last week, that our Director of Central Vermont Services, Monica White, is going to be departing. And so Monica has been with us just over a year and has really been an integral part of the sort of changes that have happened in Berlin over the past year. And so folks may recall that, that we had an employee engagement survey that was done prior to Monica's arrival, showing that there was a lot of, you know, morale challenges. And with, with people in Berlin feeling like they didn't have, you know, a local onsite person to be their, you know, champion to, to help with their work experience. And, and then about six months after Monica was here, we had another engagement survey and really just showed, you know, remarkable improvements in the employee experience. And so it's going to be a big loss for us, losing her expertise. And I'll be headed to, to Berlin today, after the meeting, to talk with the staff there to get their thoughts on how they would like to move forward and make sure that we don't lose the momentum that has been happening with that operation. Also, we've, in the past month, Romeo Von Herman, who has been the Downtown Transit Center Supervisor, has departed GMT and he is now working with the city of Burlington at the airport. And Romeo had been a very high profile employee with his position at the Transit Center and somebody that was well known by, you know, probably a majority of the folks that, that the use of the Transit Center is part of their day. And so, and so certainly he will be missed as well. I do want to provide a, a, a sort of a top level update on union negotiations. Before I do that though, I want to let you all know sort of the difference between a quality professional like Chris and then somebody like me. And so we saw how Chris had used ChatGPT for image creation. And so this is how I've used ChatGPT for image creation. Slightly different, you know, slightly different aesthetic, I guess you could say. But anyway, that's sort of the goal with our negotiations is that, that we come up with an agreement that both sides can live with. We have primarily been focusing on work rules and disciplinary type matters. We are going to be moving into benefits and wages. Maybe not at the next session, but I think definitely by the, the session after. I do get the impression that, that the negotiations are going well in terms of we're, we're making progress. And I think that some of the initial, initial concerns that we may have had at the beginning of, of negotiations to, to Judy's point, when she talked to us at our retreat, you know, that those things have, I, I feel like we're, we're working well with, with the two different negotiation teams. One of the things that I want to make sure everybody knows is that our current contract expires on June 30th. The good news is, is that the work doesn't stop if we, you know, don't have a fully finalized contract by 6:30. You know, last year, we didn't finalize our rural contract until August and, and there was no issue with that. So there, we don't have to worry about a work stoppage. What, at least, you know, because of the, for that point. The, we do want to have it resolved as quickly as possible, just so that we'll have the financial certainty. And one of the things that does happen is that any, you know, paid or benefit adjustments or pay adjustments are retroactive back to 7.1. And so, so folks won't be harmed if, if there is a delay there. I want to thank Mike Scanlon, who has attended most of the negotiation sessions. And, and Mike, I don't know if there's anything that you would want to pass on to, to the group, you know, now or not, but I so appreciate your presence.
No, I would just say it's been very interesting to, and, and welcoming to see the professionalism and the sort of positive steps taken by ultimately slowly but surely both sides to get to a contract that will work for everyone and especially being sensitive to the environment that we're operating in. That's a challenge for everyone in GMT, whether in management or providing the services that are, what, what is the basis of what we're doing. So I really commend you and your team in, in terms of how to approach this. And, and John has just been fantastic in, in, in keeping this process going forward. So I share your sort of guarded optimism that things are moving in, in a constructive and positive way, especially given the context we're in at the moment.
Thank you so much, Mike. And absolutely, John is our lead negotiator. And I think that he's been doing an outstanding job of, of, of rendering all of the, the changes that we're navigating through and, and keeping us straight. And so, Paul?
A question and then a comment. A question is, of all the discussions and negotiations you've had so far, do you have a number of tentative agreements on the issues you're talking about? That's a question. The comment is that it's always good to get some of these issues out of the way for sure. But most negotiations come down to benefits and salary. And so you're, you're cutting your, your timeframe for those discussions pretty short. So I hope there's, I hope they're fruitful.
Okay. So my understanding is that this is sort of the pathway that we followed for, with our previous negotiations. It certainly is, is how maintenance and rural went last year. And, but you are absolutely right. The, the areas where we see the potential for us to get to impasse, and that's when we get into danger where we may have a work stoppage, is, you know, likely to be overpaying benefits. My hope is, is that, that we are able to, to come to an agreement. And yes, we do have a significant number of TAs on the non-benefit and financial, the non-benefit pay, I should say, areas. And so I think that, that's why I think that we'll be wrapping up probably most of those things and getting them to TA. And I should, so TA, I believe is temporary approval, but, or a temporary agreement or tentative agreement. There we go, tentative agreement. And so I think that we'll be close to tentative agreements on just about everything other than paying benefits after the next session. And anything else about union negotiations before I move on to our next topics? Okay. And so we mentioned a little bit before that we had a really pleasant 180 degree turnaround surprise when it came to our electric battery buses. And again, thank you very much for E-Trans and FTA for going to bat on those for us. And happy to continue to have those buses come in. We, we need the buses desperately. And, and so it's good to know that there, that at least we can, at this point in time, count on those arriving. Did want to provide, oh, Mike?
Yes, I was just wondering what sort of grace period does this give us in terms of when we would have to look at additional new buses to maintain sort of the, the work level of our fleet?
Yeah. So one of the things that has been a source of a little bit of anxiety for us is that there has not been a NOFO or notice of funding opportunity put out for buses yet with the new administration. And so normally by this time, it's our 5339 grant application. This is where we do our request for vehicle replacements. And, and that is where both regular, you know, vehicle purchases and loano, lower no emission purchases get included. And so, so that knowing that we have electric battery buses coming is, is, we appreciate because, you know, we have yet to see another federal mechanism in place for us to get buses at this time. I don't know, Matt, if you wanted to provide any other, you know, thoughts about the potential for the 5339 or if you've, if you've had any updates since, since we've last discussed?
No, nothing has changed. There's no notice of funding opportunity released and no talk about when or if one will be forthcoming.
Yeah.
So let's follow up, if, if we're assuming that the loano buses will go through, after that, when would we have to revisit a replacement cycle? I mean, does that buy us a couple, three years or, or every year? We're always looking to replace a couple buses to just keep the bus fleet to a certain state.
I'm going to let Matt answer those.
So we have funding for 17 replacement buses. And if we look at around six per year, six or seven per year, that should cover us for the next three years. The other piece here is what our fleet size will be after these service reductions in the coming months. So it's, there's a little bit to be determined, but I think we should be well covered under the 17 buses that we have funding for for the next few years.
And wanting to make sure that we provide opportunity for committee updates and commissioner comments, I'm going to jump ahead to triennial review. And so for folks who are not aware, every three years, why it's called the triennial review, we have contractors from the Federal Transit Administration who, you know, will descend upon GMT in person. They've already, you know, have been working with us in terms of collecting records. But they're going to be here in May. They're going to be taking a review to make sure that, essentially that we've been using our federal funds the way that we're supposed to. The review is, looks heavily at our financials, at our procurements, making sure that, that we've ordered things and, and, you know, follow correct procurement practices. And, and so this is something that is definitely requires a heavy lift with staff to prepare for. It's a, one of the things that I think is a good thing to have because, you know, it forces us to, hey, let's look at all these policies. Oh, yep, here's one that, you know, that we need to be updated. And so it's, it creates a system where we make sure that, you know, that everything needs to be, or that everything that needs to be where it is financially is, is, is there and we're held accountable. And so I think I'm going to skip over my other items just on the rural transfer. Briefly, we, we still are waiting from RCT and TBT and then a legislative update. We do expect the T bill to be out of the Senate Transportation Committee this week. And so I'll turn it back over to you, Amy.
Thank you. I want to do a quick committee reports and, and then our commissioner comments. I would love it if we could do a quick round of introductions for Bethany. We put it off, but I didn't want to ignore it. So Paul, do you want to start with the finance committee, please?
Sure, the finance committee did meet and besides the letter of credit discussion, we, Nick gave us an update on our financials and had the report that we're still pretty much on target. So that's good news.
Great. And I am thinking workforce didn't meet because of tax season and governance. I don't, yes.
Workforce, workforce is going to meet next Wednesday. Be ready.
Beautiful. Thank you, Bob. And governance is meeting possibly this Friday, so we also didn't meet. Leadership, oh, sorry, performance, Tasha.
Tasha just left.
Ah, oops.
And, and I will say that Tasha has been very patient because And, and I will say that, uh, Tasha has been very patient, um, because much of, uh, performance, uh, was agenda has been on a performance dashboard. It's been challenging for us to develop while, uh, our planning department has been so fully engaged in other activities. And so they did not meet last month and will not meet this month.
Okay. Um, and I think the last is leadership. And we did meet yesterday, um, previewed a lot of what we talked about today. Also continuing to talk about the strategic planning process, which we are going to, um, allow a group of, allow, that sounded weird. But the plan is, um, for a group of, uh, administrative staff to get that started by looking at our previous strategic plan and make some proposals, um, for where we should go in the future. And that'll come to, um, the board in, I think, May or June is what we talked about. And then, um, we talked a little bit more about, um, evaluating our general manager. And I think we've come up with a plan. So we'll be sending out some communication. I'll be sending out some communication to the board members about that process and getting that started and then moving to, um, an annual review in January. So get a quick one on the boards, um, because we're delayed and then moving to a January, uh, annual January review process. Um, and that was it for leadership. Did I miss any committee? Okay, before we go to general, um, we've lost board members. So I'm sorry, Bethany, this is why you do this at the beginning of the meeting, but um, I did want to make sure that we had a moment to introduce ourselves, um, as board members. And so if you could, uh, I'll call on you just to make things simple. If you could just introduce, um, yourself and the community you represent, that would be great. And Mike, you're first on my screen. So I'll start with you.
Well, Scanlon and I represent South Burlington.
Thank you. Paul?
Well, my name is Paul Boni. I represent the town of Essex.
Thank you. Susan?
Uh, welcome, Bethany. My name is Susan Grasso and I represent Shelburne.
Wonderful. Andrea?
I'm Andrea Swazo and I represent Burlington.
Thank you. Chapin?
Hello, Bethany Chapin Spencer, uh, representing the other representative from Burlington. We are the community, we have two representatives.
Thank you. Henry?
Yes, hello, my name is Henry Bondes. I'm with Milton. Um, thank you.
Bob?
Bob German and I represent Grand Isle County.
Thanks. Um, Kyle?
Good morning, Bethany. My name's Kyle Brenner and I am the alternate for Grand Isle County.
Thank you. Austin? Austin? Oh, we can't hear you, Austin, but it looks like you are in the state house. And so Austin, forgive me for introducing you is the representative from, um, Winuski. And Charlene?
Hi, Bethany. Welcome aboard. I am the alternate for Williston and you just replaced me as the newest person.
And Will?
Hello, I'm Will Anderson. I'm the alternate for the city of Burlington.
Oh gosh, I do hope I didn't miss anybody myself. I'm Amy Brewer. I, um, um, current chair and, uh, represent Williston. We did meet, uh, didn't have in the meeting, but lost Tasha who, um, oh, thank you, um, Alec. I'm going to stop talking, Alec. I'm sorry.
No worries. Uh, I'm a little bright here. Alec Jones, I'm the alternate for La Moya County Planning Commission.
Ah, thank you. Well, there are folks I don't know very well and I apologize. And I was just going to introduce, uh, we had Tasha here who was, um, who is the representative from La Moya County. Um, Catherine is the representative, um, from Franklin County. And Raj is, um, you're, well, you know, Raj is, um, Essex Junction. And I'm trying to think who else we might have lost. Christian is Washington County. So welcome. Do you want to introduce yourself, Bethany?
If I can unmute. Uh, sure. I'm Bethany Clark. I'm, as I mentioned at the beginning, the new alternate for Essex Junction.
Wonderful. Um, it's so nice to have everybody here. And by the way, the alternates, um, I started as an alternate and I think, um, it's, um, really nice having, um, alternates join in so that as you join committees or, um, participate when your, um, regular representative is not there, uh, means you have all the same information. And so it's really nice to see all the alternates here. Welcome. Um, are there any other commissioner comments? Going once? Going twice? Okay, I'll entertain in, uh, um, motion to adjourn.
I'll move, we adjourn.
Thanks, Paul. We have second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Susan. Oh, Chapin, you're so late. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Amy is punchy.
I am. Have a wonderful day, everybody. It's nice to be with you.
Thank you, Amy.
Bye.